Strike five.
Move your car because I couldn't.
Can we turn it like this?
Because you have to like move on.
You have to be able to overreact.
Yeah, three seconds for me to move.
All right, yeah, well, I'll call the meeting to order.
Nope, you're good.
For the instructional levy workshop, I'd like to welcome the visitors we have and pass this down to the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're also open with the admission statements. And I will go ahead and read it. It's been a while since I have. The Jordan School District's day of admission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all environments. So with that, we will start the workshop.
All right. We would like to welcome everyone who's watching and thank you to the board. We will, we're going to keep the camera focused on us, if that's okay, for this portion. We're going to video it and be able to upload it to people who aren't able to now and go through this piece for us. All right, so customary, every two years, the instructional supplemental levy is up for reelection. The board has already previously approved the March election date, which is March 9th, 2021. Knowing that this is new for some of the board, I wanted to make sure there was enough time to discuss, research, and bring any additional items that you would like to see to a board meeting. So this is our first presentation, alert levy workshop, which means it's interactive. Anybody who has questions, you're welcome to interrupt and ask questions. It's not a formal presentation. This is workshop format. Okay? I'm Becky Meyer. I'm the superintendent.
I'm Lisa Sexton. I'm the assistant superintendent.
And Brian Wallace, chief finance officer.
All right, we'll start with the district demographics. And again, some of this the board may know. It's a board workshop. I want to make sure that people in the community are also aware of items that are in the presentations. We're going to give a little bit more detail. We're currently, we were expecting to be at 4,600 students this year. With the COVID and the number of families that aren't enrolled right now, we're at 43, right over 4,300. You can see elementary and secondary, what the difference is here. We have 11 neighborhood schools. And I don't know if the board's aware, but we are the second largest geographical district in the entire state. We have the second highest miles, 3,100 bus miles per day. I think we were third two years ago. I think we're second now. High extracurricular participation, you'll be seeing on the later slide. We have a very high percentage of students that participate. Extracurricular, I remind everyone, extracurricular is not only athletics, it also has activities. We have speech, that's an IHSA sanctioned activity, drama, band, choir. We have FFA, so we have other activities that also go into this extracurricular participation here. We are the largest employer in our community. So this year, we have 602 employees, full-time, plus the, well, full-time, not necessarily, they may be under full-time, but are our actual employees, and we have 100 guest teachers. So we have just over 700 employees, which makes us the largest community employer. So, thank you to Vice Chair Irons, already read our district's mission. But I would like to remind everyone that our reason, our why, is still our why. And we want to make sure that in this district, what, why we stand apart is that every single student matters. And everything in the presentation from this point forward is really geared towards our why. We want to make sure every single student is growing every single day academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally in all environments, from the minute we pick them up in the morning till we give them back to their sweet parents at the end of the day. We want to make sure that that is our mission. So with that, every student matters.
Every student matters. So as we think about the levy, we want to honor some of the priorities that parents and patrons have shared with us. And probably the one that comes to the top every year is that maintain commitment to reasonable class sizes in our small neighborhood schools. This community, this Lakeland Joint School District family made, really made the decision to continue down that path when we ran the bond for Timberlake High School. Because at that juncture, the patrons had to decide, are we going to work together to fund those smaller neighborhood schools? Or are we going to be okay with the larger, you know, super high schools? And that bond passed the large majority, and so that really set us down this path of small neighborhood schools. Safe, secure learning environment. We have armed guards in place in doing large part to patron input to us about their, some of their concerns about school safety. Strong academic performance. Lakeland has a reputation for great education. And in fact, when you talk to realtors, they will tell you when they're selling homes that are within our boundaries, it's one of the first things they point out to families, is this house is in the Lakeland Joint School District. We get calls from parents every year telling us that we're looking to buy. I'm looking at, this is the address we're looking at. Can you tell me if it's in the district's boundaries? Because it's important to parents, and they do their research. We have high parent involvement and satisfaction. You're going to see that later in another slide. Strong community partnerships. We have strong partnerships with law enforcement, fire, but also community, businesses within our community step up and support the things that we're doing with kids. And then something that I know our patrons are very appreciative of and is a really big deal for them is conservative approach and being fiscally responsible. So when we're talking about making sure that every student is growing every day academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally, we are looking at that, and then how do we responsibly use the district dollars to make sure we're meeting the needs of our kids? And, but being fiscally responsible and accountable to our taxpayers. So on the next slide, one of the things that Dr. Meyer has consistently done since she has been in the district is provide that accountability report out to our patrons to show them, these are the dollars that you have provided to us, and these are the things that we have done with those. And so those are all linked in for your perusal.
We typically have an elementary and a secondary slide here. But because of the COVID situation and other surrounding districts have been in hybrid and not in hybrid and in yellow and then in orange in different districts. And also, there's elementaries in our surrounding districts that are K-5, 1-5, then we have some K-6. So the slide didn't feel like apples to apples to us, and we decided to leave that slide out. We certainly can provide that data of the surrounding elementaries if you'd like. Trustee Thompson?
Let me ask where the PowerPoint is, because it's not linked to my workbook.
I can do that for a second.
Okay, I just, with the accountability reports.
Yep.
Having access to them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the, we did have the secondary slide, and you can see this does address what Ms. Sexton was talking about with having, the community has really supported small neighborhood schools. Just in looking at the high schools, we have a 3A and a 4A compared to the other high schools that are 5As. I think that just speaks to the community's desire to keep those small neighborhood schools even at the secondary level. And again, we can supply elementary numbers as well if the board is interested in that. So what's the purpose of the levy? Why do we do it? And again, it is called, on the tax rules, it's called supplemental. But as Ms. Sexton said, it's not supplemental to what we do. It's really one-third of our budget, and it really is something that we need to make sure that the taxpayers understand. What's our why behind it?
So as Dr. Meyer just said, it's not supplemental. It's critical to what we do and the services we provide to kids. It supports our teaching and learning programs for all students to make sure that we're meeting their individual needs. It does address staff, student, parent, and patron input, as I just discussed with some of those items that were on that previous slide. But probably what is most important for our taxpayers to really understand is that our instructional levy closes the gap between what we get from the state in revenue and what it costs to operate our small neighborhood schools. Because we could operate our system more efficiently maybe if we had those super high schools and 700 kid elementary schools and super junior highs. But this community has elected not to do that, and it just requires more staffing to have those buildings open and serving kids.
Why do you say that? I mean, why would having larger numbers allow us to?
Economies of scale.
So, I was just going to say, if you, let's, if we had a 700-student elementary school, and you just would have a greater opportunity to maybe have all of those classrooms be at 25, 26, whatever that magic number is, instead of having pockets where we have maybe a smaller class size where we only have 17 kids at a grade level. But if they were all in one school, you could take those 17 and distribute them, and you wouldn't need that staff member.
Also, at each school, you have a principal and a principal's assistant and an admin assistant and a custodian and a, and so when you have, and it's just throughout the nation, districts have to make these choices. But when you have a bigger, you can have less and then put them in different classes and also. But, so you do have to, I guess duplicate some services is what they say when you have smaller. But it creates more of a family environment and more specialized and individualized instruction, which goes to our mission, which I think you'll see later on that the parents really, really are interested in. So that's a really good question, though, because, and not to call out any particular district, but there are districts that are close to us where their class sizes can be similar to what Ms. Sexton said, where they can keep adding students and then not have to add a staff person until you get over a threshold, where ours is a little bit different, just because we do have that priority.
And the pockets never work out the way you want them to. The other thing that I would just say to the board, having been here for 29 years, this is my 30th year in Lakeland, is that the biggest benefit that I see with our small neighborhood schools are the relationships that are forged between the adults in the building and the kids. When you're in a super high school, I've got nieces who've gone to high schools in both of the other two districts. And they, their sense is that people just really don't even know who I am. There just are so many kids in the building. So I think that that is really important.
And just back to, because of what you said, I mean, just when you have this many students, the principal knows the name of every single student. I mean, it just really does make a very personalized learning environment.
So do we have, in all of our schools, do we have that hierarchy you were talking about? Principal, assistant principal, then admin assistant in all of our schools?
Yep.
Not all of our schools have a prin, have an.
They have a principal's assistant or an assistant principal, depending on the size of the school. But every one of our schools has a designated principal's assistant. And then the counselors and the counselor ratio, school nurse ratio, there's just a lot of difference in all of those type of class sizes. So from every single position, custodian, square footage, all the way up to a principal of a building, our numbers are typically lower than our counterparts where they are at a bigger, they're closer together geographically. And they also are funded a little bit differently because of what their taxpayers choose. So one thing that Ms. Sexton discusses, the closing the gap, I'm going to touch on it here. Mr. Wallace will also be touching on it a little bit later. I think it's important to note, oftentimes when we present to the patrons, they're not familiar with the historical context of how the state funding mechanisms shift back in 2006. I know most of you are, but I'd like to just make sure that it's, we say it again, reiterate, that when Jim Risch was the governor for a couple of months before he went back to Washington DC, he did make a shift in how we funded education in our state. So it went more to the local taxpayer, and it was a burden on the local taxpayer. But the theory was, if your local taxpayers will support it, then that's a community decision versus a state decision. The way, the way that I'm, and Mr. Wallace actually does a better job of explaining this, but he's going to, it's coming back in the next part. I just want to point out, you can see that this was $4.76 that was coming to our district. This black right here, and that black was state funding that was coming to us. Now, when that went away in 2006, so that was the 2006, 2007 school year, look what happened. It went down to $1.60, and these are all the levies that are supported in our district. He will show you later, like, which is the plant facility, the bond, the toward, the emergency levy, that's all in here. And you can see, the district, you know, went down and then has slowly been working its way back up into when we first went to the 8.99 million here. We are still not up to what we had from the state before. And this was the year when the community supported going, moving from the 5.3 million to the 8.99. That our levy rate was here, and then it's been going down, and you will see it's going to go down even further. But these are the different things. You can see that that was taken away. So really, oftentimes when people talk about their property taxes, we need to remind them that this has shifted in our state. So that's just, really wanted to make sure that you knew that that was part of the why for the levy and why so many districts in this state are relying on an instructional levy to function. So how did we determine our levy priorities? I just, this part is, again, in a historical perspective. We really started, when I first came, what's working in our district? Like, let's talk about the positive, what's really working and people do not want to see change. That was the very first thing we talked about. Because the last thing you want to do is go into a system and say, oh, let's just change everything and upend when things are really working well. So we started with that as the very first thing. Then we got input from all the stakeholders, students, we had student-focused groups, we had all the admin groups, we had parent groups, we had, every single building had a, we went around to every single building, and I talked to every single building, and they did priority lists. We really looked at every single stakeholder, and the community had a chance to give input as well, so that we could identify what are the levy priorities that people have. And we just went from the broad of like, what do we have that's working? What else would you like to see? And we did what we called funneling exercises. So people had sticky notes, prioritize. Buildings did their own priorities and then funneled to their top, so that we really looked at, and just for a perspective, it was over $10 million was the first one that we said was Plan A. In this, back in 2016, when I very first started, we said, we don't think the community was, at that point, would be supportive. So we went to the Plan B, which was the 8.99. And so that had taken a lot of what people, and even pared it down even more. And that's where the board decided that they felt like the community could support. So we really refined it, we presented the information to the board, they asked for additional input, they gave input, and then they voted on the, what at that time was Plan B was the 8.99. So we just wanted everyone to know that there was, there was a process for giving, people giving input and identifying what they wanted on the levy. That part being said, where, when we look at this part, we really took, when we do annually a parent and patron input, we really want to look at what helped us prioritize, and before every levy, we look and say, what's important to you? So interestingly enough, 35.9%, if you, I mean, just, this is very, I know there's no clinks, but it's very, very strange. This is maintain reasonable class sizes, 35.9, I'm going to come back to this slide. But look where it was two years ago, 35.9, this pointer, 35.9 for maintain reasonable class sizes. And the exact, and look at, we had 563 parents responded two years ago in our fall survey, 2008. I mean, isn't that odd? And then this year, we had 12,000, 1,270, and there's still 35.9. Isn't that, I mean, I, this has to be, it's like 36% of people really want.
I don't know. I just thought that was.
I think that's a good view of our district, though. It seems lately, any survey we take seems to be right about that split.
Yeah. I think you're right. I think that actually is intuitive. So the next thing, the priorities from here, this year, are very, the top three are the same top three as two years ago, which I find interesting based on the situation we're in and what we've lived through the last couple of years. But I just think maintain reasonable class sizes is number one. Then after that, we have small neighborhood schools, which really aligns really with reasonable class sizes, but they are, you know, the top two. Then we go to safety and security, this orange here, and in this one, maintain or increase school safety and security is the green, 16.3. So it's really, those top three are in alignment. The other thing we have that we didn't have this time is address in student growth and enrollment, and that was 15.8. So the priorities for the board, and again, this entire survey was Survey Monkey. You'll be able to see every single thing and every single comment and everything Chrissy has ready to go for you. I just didn't want to overwhelm you before. I thought then you can look at it afterwards, because you have a lot to look at. So I am going to gloss over this part, because this part in and of itself could take an hour. I feel like you could go back and look at this, you can ask us questions, and also patrons will look through this and ask questions. And when we do community presentations, more will come out as well. But really, community, when you have good community support and you have parent involvement, like Ms. Sexton said, you get great student results. So we, we like to call it return on their investment. When you look at the tax rate, what are you getting for what you're putting into the system? And it really is a community investment, because whether you have kids in the system or not, people that live in this community have great, I mean, honestly, have students with great character. I'm going to go back to this one. If you look. Character, right here. Oh, now I lost it. It was, maybe it's in the next one. It's in the next slide coming up. There is something about our character and how important, oh, what do you like best about our, and it's about the character of our kids. It is rated one of the top, and that isn't typical of most districts to talk about the character of the students. So these are all accolades, things that are going well, state honors, national honors, things that we do that we're really proud of. And they're academic, there's some athletic things, there's programs, our armed guard programs, FFA, Air Force Academy.
Secondary and elementary.
All throughout here, Idaho State Teacher of the Year, first time ever in this district. So several things in here, volunteers, community service, things that we're really proud of, things that are really very distinctive for our community. So these are all things you can look through later, but they're things that we're very proud of, and we really want the public to know that their funds are going to a good purpose. So what's our community satisfaction level? Here's what I was talking about, foreshadowing what was coming up.
Yes, so when you look at this bar graph, when we look at a five-star ranking kind of thing, we kind of look at the threes, fours, and fives are kind of proficient to advanced. And so when we looked at this slide and just looked at how many people put us as a three-star, four-star, or five-star compared to that 1,270, the thing that was really exciting for us was over 86% of our parents, according to that bar graph, are satisfied with what we're doing. And in a non-COVID year, I think that's, we would celebrate that. But in a COVID year, I think we should be standing on the mountaintops and shouting it to the world, because on a daily basis, you guys are tasked with making really hard decisions. And we know with every decision that we as a leadership team makes and the board makes, that there are people who don't agree with what we're doing, and we can't make everybody happy, which is a really hard place for us to be, because we're used to making everybody happy, because that's what we do. So to know that and the reality that we're living in and still have over 86% of our parents be happy with the programs and the services we're providing to kids, I think is something we really need to celebrate. Yes, so then, here's, yes, so here's where the characters. If you go back to the 2018 survey that Dr. Meyer did, that was one that we were looking at, it's almost identical. Their number one thing that they love most about our district are the teachers and the staff. And then Dr. Meyer and Mr. Wallace and I are really proud of the fact that number two is the overall district functioning. So that means we're doing something right. But also, what I think is really important is that third one, that family atmosphere. I've been in this district a long time, and the thing that I've always valued about Lakeland is that this feeling of family, this staff, everybody knows each other, they care about each other, they have each other's backs. And it doesn't matter which of our buildings you walk into, you feel that sense of family. And our kids belong to that family community, and I think that that's what, that's the intangible thing that I think our parents are valuing with what we do for our kids. So those are some things that we're really proud of. But 7.4% of our parents like the fact that our students show really good character. We get accolades and emails from people outside of our community who observe our kids. And they don't, it's unsolicited, they don't have to send it to us, but they take the time to let us know that the kids of Lakeland are really respectful and polite, and we should be proud.
So in looking, we went through and read every single comment, and we just looked for themes so that we could share with the board. You were going to get a coffee at every single comment, but we just wanted to share a few of them with you. What I really liked about this one is, this is somebody that's in their first year in our district, and they've already noticed what a difference that our focus on kids makes. A ton in reading already, I mean, and this is the first year in the district, so I thought this was a really great one to share.
This is one that I thought was important to bring, just, this was actually on the what would you like to change list and not the what do I love list. But I think the thing that was important to me was our parents liked some of our programs that we had to kind of pull back on and are hoping to see those come back. And just as a reminder, the ALP program, we paused this year because we needed to have more teachers in classrooms to get our class size numbers down so we could social distance better. So, but this was something that showed up several times in the comments.
This one I like because it really speaks to the board making the choice, which as Ms. Sexton says, not everybody is 100% in favor, and I have had, you know, several emails to the contrary. I find that if you make a decision, I tend to hear from the ones that don't agree with the decision and the ones that don't, don't let you know, like, that's a great decision. There's a few. But this one really spoke, and there were several throughout that I wanted the board to be aware of, that there's a very high satisfaction level for parents, and they're very pleased that we aren't, had in-person learning, that we see our students five days a week, and that the board had the courage to stay in yellow. So I wanted to point that out, that that's a theme as well. So now, Mr. Wallace.
I wondered, why am I up?
Do you want me to be monitored or you want me to?
It's no.
So, you know, with the supplemental levy and their instructional levy, there definitely is an impact on taxpayers. First, just so you know, for our general fund budget this year, that you approved this year, that for the revenues, just on the revenue side, and this is just the general funds, not taking any of the federal funds in there. But that our instructional levies, 26% of the revenues, anticipated revenues that we get for, you know, the majority of our instructional program. State revenues is still, you know, our largest revenue, it's 73%. We do get 26% of levy, so it's a, obviously, if that was not there, there would be significant changes happening to what we do. We do have a 1% of federal dollars. We actually have more than that, probably overall, or federal dollars of maybe to call funds, like 5% to 6% of our budget. But just for the general fund, it's really just the federal E-rate program that comes into play. So, well, I'm going to go over to our tax rate and sort of the impacts on that. And there's really two factors that impact the tax rate. One is how much you're going to levy, and number two is the taxable value of our district. And so this is just a history from '04, '05 up to 2020, '21. I have the asterisk there for this year. That is a preliminary number, that 4,173 million that I received about a month ago from the county. They'll give us a final number, it just hasn't come out yet for when the tax bills come out. It'll be a little bit different than that, but that's going to be ballpark. But even just last year, we can see that's an official number, the 3.3 billion, 669 million. So you can see the rates of growth and we definitely have had some really big years of growth, especially 05, 06, 06, 07. You can see 40%. That's crazy. But then we had the minuses during recession, but since really 03, 14, we dug out the recession and definitely, I think everybody can feel it now. The, not only the growth in just assessed values and the interest of, you know, people wanting to come to live in North Idaho and Cooney County, but also the growth in new development also adds to the tax rate. So it's a double thing.
At least it adds to the assessed value.
It does. Right, so you have more people paying for the pot.
They pay higher now, which they basically, because the whole tax, you know, being based on the assessed value of it.
Yeah. And so that's just another way of looking at the same data with a bar chart. And just, you know, you can definitely see the dip of the recession as we've been going up and the large increase of the past few years. I did want to highlight that our, you know, if you look back 20 years, we averaged about 6.5% of assessed value growth. That after we figure this year, we get official, maybe it's going to be seven for the 20-year average. So a lot, we use that number a lot of times for our planning. What do we think the rate will be in a couple of years down? I might use this average rates and more, let's assume that it's going to go up 6% each year, or maybe we'll be conservative. Let's assume it's only going to go up 2%. Because then you're pretty, I mean, obviously, as you've seen the recession, there can be dips, but we don't anticipate that, at least in the next few years. But on average, over time, you know, the district difference is growing and values go up. So I'm going to go back to this chart, which I think is really pretty telling. So and when Dr. Meyer talked about that 05, 06. Now, is that, oh, that didn't show up.
That's why I didn't walk up there. Do you want to walk up there?
No, it's okay. So that, the black bar on the end, that you can see it's right on the $2.50 line. So that was a state property difference. Everybody paid $2.50 of assessed value and it went to education. So if our assessed value in the district went up, we got more money from the state. Because it was 250 flat, or if it went down, we would get less money. So you can see that when that, they changed the law, that they're, instead of funding education, property taxes, or they changed the law and the state apportionment that we get is being funded through income taxes and sales tax. And so you can see, you know, 6, 07, 07, 08, there's no red. That's our supplemental levy. So we didn't even have a supplemental levy because we had the state. Well, what happened is the recession hit in those years. And this just shows property taxes, but there's a, and you've seen this with the budget, you can see it, the state significantly cut funding when income tax and sales tax revenues, which are more cyclical, and property tax revenues, went down. And so they, since education is a big 50%, K-12 education of the Idaho budget, the state of Idaho budget, they were cutting everywhere and we were not immune to that. So what happened is districts across the state started passing supplemental levies to make up for the state budget cuts if the voters would approve it. And so you can see the red is the dollar amount or of the rate per thousand, anyway, is what it is, of our supplemental levy. The green is our bond. And then we've always had a plant facility levy and then if we had an emergency levy that year, and there's always this little bit of what they call a tort levy, which is statutory, we get about $80,000 more a year from it. It's not a lot in big picture. So you can see that we did have, when we first passed that $8.9 million levy amount, and we're in the fourth year of that, of this 2020, 21, that our rate was 453. Total, if we took all of our levies, then it went down to 412 for the 2019, 20 school year, so when just finished, we were at $3.48. And now I'm projecting, I don't know what the final number is going to be, but I'm projecting 278, maybe 279 for our rate, which is, that's a big drop, you know, almost, you know, 80, 50, we're talking 70 cents per thousand. There's two reasons for that. One is that growth in assessed value. Two is for all of our taxes this year, we will be collecting $1.3 million less than last year. That's because we defuse those bonds, so I don't have to ask as much for our bonds. That's about a million dollars of it. And we had an emergency levy last year, 252,000. We're not collecting an emergency levy this year. We didn't qualify, so it wasn't even, we couldn't even ask, it wasn't an option. So that's, was another 250. So in just pure dollars, we're not collecting as many dollars as we were the previous year, or a supplemental saying the 8.9. So that contributed to the drop in rate too, because it's less dollars, plus a higher denominator, you're going to have a lower rate.
So how did the drop in the rates and all that, how did, you're talking about the money that's been cut, lost, whatever, set aside. How does that compare with the cutbacks that you already did or what the state was asking? Is that figured in here also, or is that another?
That's sort of another, yeah, this is, that's its own thing, yeah, because this is all just really on the this is on the revenue side. And, and really the impact of of the of what a taxpayer with a, let's say, 100,000, so if I had a $100,000 house, or let's say a $100,000 taxable value, then I'm going to be paying 300, last year I paid $348. This year, if I had a $100,000 taxable value, I'm going to pay 278.
And we have a slide later in his presentation to show you that average house, you know, side. Oh, the community one, yeah, we did that one. But we do have a slide that show them different values and how much they would pay. The good, the piece that we also will point out to the public that's very imperative, because when we go out and I say, Brian doesn't say this, but when I go out and say, "Look, your taxes are going to be less because look at how your rate has gone down." And that's coming from my mind and saying we have more people that are helping to get that 8.9, the pie is 8.99, and there's more people that are helping. Brian always points out, yes, but there could be other things that have affected their tax rate. They could have an addition to their house, your tax assessed value could go up because they've been years that they were behind in assessment in our county. They could have added a barn to their property. There's a lot of different, and theirs could have gone up 10%, but the neighbor's went up 15. So theirs does seem lower than their neighbors. So there's a lot of confounding variables that go into this, so it's not okay for me to go out and say, which I found out first year I did this, you can't go out and say your taxes are going to go down. But if you did, if everything stayed the same and you had, nothing had changed, then the taxes for people, it would be going down. But there's the other pieces. Does that make sense?
And I'd say for this year, because we're actually collecting less dollars and values did go up, not just because of appreciation, but because of new development, that in real dollars, most people will be paying the same or a little less. I mean, there could be variances, but that should.
And I do, do want to remind the board, the purpose that we had started, the defecence on the bonds, is that we were the long-range facility planning committee, had made a proposal to the prior board to look at doing a bond and that failed. And then we didn't go back, or at that point, we went back, we were going to rerun. COVID came and so we're just, as you know, we're kind of in a pause for that right now. But that was the rationale behind what Mr. Wallace did.
Part of what we were trying to do was, with the defecence and some of the other things, was knowing that the bonds, new bonds will be coming on, was get the new bonds off as fast as possible and try to keep it flat, level. Some of these new bonds at this point not coming on, it's going to drop on that end.
Does that make sense? Are we totally confused? Or is that okay?
But that's another day for the bond ring. But for this right now, I think we're definitely, you know, that's a, that's a big drop. And really, what we talked about, just, I think this was good, you know, slide just to show, you know, theoretically that, you know, if your valuation increases and you have, you know, we levy an identical amount, the rates are going to go down. Just as, just by the math. So that generally, you know, if we're in a growing district and our levy dollars are not increasing greatly, then really our rates should go down over time. That's what you can see in that graph. Last four years, they've definitely gone down from $4.53 now down to a projected of $2.78.
I think their problem with the property house is that they don't do anything to their property. As growth comes around them, their taxes don't go down. Their tax keeps going up and up and up.
Correct.
So they don't see the correlation between the assessed value versus more people sharing the pie because for us, I can use our one property, for instance, our single, our one levy is one-third of our tax bill. So over time, ours has not personally gone down, it's continuing to skyrocket. As my neighbor's house went from an assessed value of 200,000 to 679,000 over four years, that makes ours worth more.
Correct. And I, with, if you look at some of the recent growth and that, that 348 going on at 280. If I calculate, if I look at your tax bill last year and then this comes out this year, I bet you pure dollar amounts, I'd be very surprised if it, in dollar, like we calculated this, right, it was a thousand dollars. That that, I bet you that's going to be pretty flat for you this year. It would be my guess, or maybe even a little drop.
Yeah, let's hope.
Right. Well, and she makes a good point because she pointed out that even to my point about nothing changed, but other people are increasing their value, which inadvertently brings up, yeah.
Right, and there's a lot. Yeah, they're, you can't, you know, and so effectively, if we keep the same dollar amount.
Right.
And everybody's property values went up equally. The rate would be adjusted equally and everybody would pay the same amount next year. What happens though is some people's really goes up and some stays flat. So this person's paying more of the pie relative to their neighbor. And some of those, that's, those are variables that we can't control.
Technically, those will catch up.
Eventually.
Eventually, they'll find out, okay, this whole neighborhood, all these houses have sold for 600, this person's still at 150.
No, yes, yeah, it does. It does sort of even out like that, but certainly, you know, every year I'll get calls. Right, and you can calculate that. The other thing that I think is real important though, with the black, is with the black, just so the board understands, is that we do not receive any more dollars because of growth. So there's a misnomer, I think, out there somewhere. And even with like, I've talked with the elders, they go, they put it in the subject and they go, "Well, why are you upset about, you know, you're asking maybe an impact fee or some dollars for us or the donation of land? Because I have these new houses, you're going to have a bigger tax base, you get more dollars." Well, that's true for cities, that's true for counties and some other districts, not, and used to be true for schools, back 05, 06, but no more. So that having those, that new development, I mean, is great as far as now you have more people to help share the cost of levy. But I don't, we receive no more dollars unless it is approved by the voters.
Right, and we didn't change that section.
Yes.
In this regard purposely.
Yes.
School districts. Everybody else has the right to implement impact fees for the growth, except for a school district.
And that makes no sense.
For the future of our little.
Yeah, and usually the children in that neighborhood are utilizing that. And you, so you think that you'd want that, you know, money to go toward helping those children in that neighborhood. So that doesn't make any sense. So we do.
Yeah, I mean, they do help share a little bit of the cost, but as far as generating more revenue, it doesn't. Anyway.
Resolution, I'm bored.
Yeah.
So this, just so you know, this is 2019, 20, so this is not this September, but last September. And the reason I had to use those numbers, I don't have the current values or the updated numbers for Coeur d'Alene and Lake Ponderay and Post Falls. Just to show as a comparison of assessed valuation of the district's Coeur d'Alene, obviously with their commercial and resort and the lake property, they definitely have the most value by far. Again, Lake Ponderay, even though we have more kids than they, their assessed value is higher, again, really driven by some of the commercial up there, the companies, but the lake property. Post Falls is, you know, about 100 million more than us, or not quite. And that used to be a bigger gap, so it really shows our assessed values. We're starting to catch Post Falls, which is, you know, some of that, we do have the lake property, but that's, we're getting closer to, for, because Post Falls is crazy, but anyways, that just sort of gives you a comparison. And so this is, again, this is comparing last year, not what they're going to be this year. There's 278, remember our 348. So I think it's good for the board just to see where, how do we compare with some of our, our Nigiri districts? And I took North Idaho, I took small, big, you know, then I used Lewiston and Moscow just because they're sort of our size, about as far south as we go, we think of North Idaho districts. And then the Cooney County districts and Lake Ponderay. You know, we're right about in the middle and that's sort of been our history since we've added our supplemental levy. That we've never been the highest of, or a Moscow or Lewiston, might be. But we haven't been down, we're Coeur d'Alene schools or Post Falls as neither, or anything like Ponderay. I think one unique thing of our, of our, you know, levies in there is we have the red, which is the plant facility levy. Our other districts, you know, don't have that levy. They've chosen to either do it through a supplemental levy and just do it every two years, not a whole plant facility levy. Or maybe they've rolled it into a lawn project and things like that, or just haven't been able to pass anything. But that is sort of a unique thing for Lakeland and that certainly has sort of saved, we have the five-year plant levy and so we're going to talk some numbers here about supplemental, that won't include that because that's not up for expiration. It still has a little more time. But that has supplemented, you know, our ability to do some emergency repairs, you know, without that plant levy, we wouldn't have replaced the Twin Lakes route, the Timberlake High School route, the Spirit Lake route. I mean, doing the work at Lakeland Junior High and that report, and even Lakeland High and some of those big ticket items have been several hundred thousand dollar, that probably sort of has allowed us not to ship general fund revenues to those projects, so it's been very helpful also. And so that's all I had, just on, that's just sort of an overview of the impact of the taxpayer and we'll talk about it a little more as we go.
Okay, so the timeline. Don't happy monkey. It's a fun. So the timeline is today's levy workshop. We did have the motion on there. The board decided they, oh, we're in discussion and made a motion today in the meeting and decided we want to come up with it out tonight. That would be your prerogative. I'm not asking for that or expecting that it's going to happen until you're going to want more information, but it is possible that that could be as early as tonight. The next regular board meeting, November 10. If the board would like to see additional information or data brought to them, and then we would like to have a final levy amount determined by November 10 at that board meeting, because we do need to have a formal resolution up to both Cooney County and Bonner County clerks in January, so for it to make the march. And that's very sticky. We've got from Bonner County, the last two times they've run it, they've come back with corrections. It's not just that, here's the form letter and it's done. They've come back with corrections both times. So the, after you determine the levy amount, then there's a whole resolution that Brian works with an attorney to have that finalized. And that goes in front of the board December 8. There's only one board meeting in November and December this year, because where the holidays fall. So then January, the sooner we have the levy amount that the board has determined, then the sooner we can start our infomercials, our little YouTube presentations that are the quick little, under one minute, where the public likes to have that kind of information on Facebook and in the public, and then we can do presentations throughout. And I don't know how it's going to work. Hopefully COVID will be cleared up by then, but we did, my first year, we did 46 and then last time, 48 presentations. So I don't think we'll probably have as many this time, but the three of us are willing to go do presentations in any place that people ask us to. A lot of PT, every single staff, Lisa and I are going to go to every single staff between now in the end of the year. We've already, Chrissy's already scheduled those, so that we inform the staff. Then we can go to any PTUs, we can go to Grange, we can go churches, we've done any sort of organization that any sort of organization that has invited us going to people's houses. So we, um, we just make, we need presentations as possible, and we'd like to do our infomercials as soon as the board decides, get back sheets out. Um, if you recall, the communication that the public really wanted was the postal, the USPS. So we have, and we do that legally fact-wise, and we have a postcard that we've already started to design with facts. And as soon as we know that amount, we can start to let the board, let the public know that there is gonna be a vote in March, and this is what, it's not a bond, it's not new construction, this is what it is, and so we wanna, but then we wanna be in the public eye, doing presentations, um, in January. So, the March ninth, sorry.
That's right, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, the election date, just to remind people, is Tuesday, March ninth.
I was gonna say to add to that, meaning that we're recording this, when we talk about the general budget, I don't know if most people understand what that is when they're listening. That is the thirty four million, is that correct? So, it would be the thirty four million minus, we'll say nine million, if this, we said, no, we're not gonna do it. That would be a huge chunk, just so that people understand that.
Thirty percent of our budget.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. Of that.
And it's rather fitting that the auditor's gonna be here tonight to do the formal presentation for the board on, on the audit, so that would be great timing. So determining the levy amount, this is the board's role. My role and our district leadership team's role here, that, that, you know, all of us that work together are really to gather the input that would be helpful for the board to make your decision on what you would like the levy amount for us to go out to the patrons. That's our job. Your job is to determine, based on all the input and have information and data to give you, on what amount you would like us to go out, and information to share, um, with the public, so that it can be a successful levy. So, the last two times that I had presented to the board, and trustee Irens would know this, that there was a Plan A, B, and C. With all the factors going on right now, it really has come down to an A, B, C, and D presentation. So, uh, different plans. So, we're gonna just each explain a little bit of it, you can certainly ask questions along the way.
So, Plan A would be an increase of one point five million roughly. And Brian, later, we'll kind of talk about what that does to the levy rate, so you have a really clear picture of each of these. Uh, but with this Plan A, we would maintain all current programs, our staffing levels, and our competitive wages, because that's a piece that we haven't really talked about, but being, uh, as close as we are to Washington, we have to keep our wages competitive because we lose people across borders. We would like to add, um, and I mentioned this when, to the board, when we were talking about the preschool program. But we would like to add an early learning center, which, uh, would be a, a community benefit. And it's just a one-time startup cost, because just like Base, um, this is how we did Base, we provided the startup cost, and then they became self-sustaining through their tuition, and that would be the, uh, that's how we built this plan.
Would this be in addition to the current preschool that we?
Yes, yes, because the current preschool, they're only there to, it's truly a preschool. What we, what I know from being an elementary principal and talking to parents is we have a lot of parents who would love to have their kids in that in a preschool type environment where there's actually academics happening. But if they work in Spokane, they don't have the, the ability to run them there and back-to-day care, childcare, and those kinds of things. So, this would, we would be open from six in the morning until six in the evening to provide that childcare for parents, but there would be, uh, a two-and-a-half hour, uh, block from like nine to eleven thirty, where we would really focus on early literacy and early numeracy for three and four-year-olds, or five-year-olds who are not don't meet the age requirement for, um, starting school. And then, um, in the afternoon, there would be a lot of social play with arts and different things, music, and, um, so it would be very structured. And so it's just truly a one-year, without parts, just a one-year startup cost, because the way we have it planned, it would sustain itself moving forward.
Then can I add one thing that you, I, I don't know if the board remembers, but she had already put in, um, quite a bit of work into starting it, but then we all of a sudden had that holdback. She already had started to design it and had, was gonna do a pilot year with staff, students, kids, you remember, I don't know if you guys remember that, but she has done a lot of work already in this, there's a lot of interest, so I just want you to know, it's not just something that she just thought of, it's like she's been working on it for a while. I just didn't know if people remembered that or not, but I just was curious how it parallels.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and thank you for, for asking that question. Um, Principal Melton, actually, if we, if this startup cost is for one site, we would start small and kind of build it. She would love to have it at Twin Lakes Elementary in the classroom adjacent to preschool, which would allow us to have some peer models. We talked about that when we did the, uh, presentation about preschool. The other thing it allows us to do is, uh, for some of our, our teenage moms who are trying to graduate, so they can provide for their children, and it provides us an opportunity to help them with childcare. So, um, and then, obviously, um, there's, if you talk to parents, there are waiting lists for childcare around in our area, so it's, there's, that we can help fill. The District Safety Task Force, uh, their, their goal is to have an armed guard or an SRO in every building, we talked about that. And so this amount would allow us to add more new armed guards in those two years of the levy. And then, um, it would also provide dollars to allow us to go through, um, a science curriculum adoption process, because we, um, have not adopted new science curriculum in a very long time. Uh, and so our teachers are teaching to the standards, and we've created our instructional calendars, but, um, I know there's been some questions from the board about what, where are they pulling information that they're sharing with kids? And so this would give us an opportunity to, to actually have a, a district adopted tool. But adopting a textbook is a very expensive proposition, so we're talking about five to six hundred thousand dollars for a six-year adoption, which is why it's on levy. Plan B would be an increase of one million dollars, and so all of those things stay the same, and the difference really is that that science curriculum adoption would go away, because that's five to six hundred thousand dollars, so we're just, um, kind of trying to stair-step down, um, some different plans. And so, Plan C.
Let's see, Mr. Wallace. So, we're in now year four of, of effectively our eight point nine million levy. There's a two-year levy, then voters voted to extend it for another two years, and we that levy election, there wasn't an increase in the amount, it was the same. And so if we stay, let's say, stayed at the eight point nine million, um, for another two years, we'll be, you know, year six and do a flat levy, effectively, flat dollar amount, and there's just no doubt, as you start getting to six years, that if our state revenues aren't increasing significantly, and expenses aren't flat, effectively. We've been, you know, having pay raises, and people move on the salary schedule, uh, you know, other costs, you know, have gone up, um, just some things with general inflation, so that at some point your revenue stays flat and your expenses keep going up a little bit, you have to adjust your program. So, you know, we started looking at some things, there's no decisions made, this is just a an example that some things would probably have to be reduced if we keep it flat, and estate revenues. I, I'm just not anticipating with, with the pandemic, we're gonna get huge increases at the state level. I guess we'll never, we'll, we'll know later in January, um, but we have to set the levy amount before we know. So we'd have to at least be thinking about, okay, our revenues are flat, expenses might be increasing, so what would we maybe adjust to, to balance the budget? Um, again, a lot of these things have been adds from the levy in the past, like athletic trainers. Armed guards were, were added. Insurance repair, replacement cycle for music instruments, you know, some disciplines, supplies, materials, maybe some behavior intervention coordinators, you know, I guess, I don't wanna get anybody nervous about, oh, if this doesn't happen, this would cut. And you sort of have to look at it, and a lot of times reductions, you know, you try to keep as far away from the core classroom as you can, and some of often the adjunct, some services that we provide are the first things that are, are, you look at in, in that environment. So, you know, we definitely would, if we keep having a flat levy over the years, you know, at some point you as your costs keep going up, you have to, you have to adjust. So Plan C would, would have some of those conversations.
And Plan D, um, we did do one, because I did hear, um, some feedback is, well, what would it look like if we did, uh, decrease the levy amount? So again, after we've talked about possible increases and how the levy rate, if it stayed the same, if the levy amounts stay the same, the levy rate would go down. That means that if we looked at decreasing from eight point nine nine, and we went to eight, I'm not in favor of this, because it makes some significant cuts, but I thought it was important to present it. We definitely could not maintain the string, current staffing levels because of the small neighborhood schools. Um, Mr. Wallace said if we have, you know, stable funding this year, I'm myself and surrounding area, region one superintendents are very fearful that we're not gonna even maintain that. Every single school district in the state, except for two, have decreased in enrollment, and they're doing the in, even further, they're doing the funding based on enrollment. This first go-around, and then we for sure have to report ADA, our old way of funding, average daily attendance, as well as enrollment, because Julie Overly, who's the new CFO for the state, says that, we're almost there. It's okay, no, we're gonna take a pause, right, we're gonna take a quick pause, can you, uh, could we pause for one second? Is that possible? Sorry, I just don't want you to miss anything.
I don't either.
I know, and I could, I've been there myself, so I just thought we could just wait for one.
We need to have like a signal, we need to have one of those signals.
A signal's like my other one.
If we were in school, you could have a little yellow square that you could just put.
Thank you for letting us, we need to have, uh, a comfort break, and thank you for letting us pause. So if we go to D, Plan D, again, this would shave off point nine nine, so about a million dollars. Um, we would definitely need to, um, would not be able to continue to offer some pretty big programs, like a full-day kindergarten, um, current staffing letters, le- levels. The athletic trainers, armed guards. And then, really, what we've looked at, a huge chunk, um, is extracurricular, and as I said earlier, this is not just athletics, and it is, all of the athletic programs have been moved onto the levy, so that they, we have, you know, with this levy, the last two times that it's passed by the public, we've had uniform rotations, um, that we've been able to do, we've paid for state travel for teams that have made it. And we've been able to decrease fundraising by those teams, for them to each be on their own fundraising cycle, to try to, you know, get enough money to go to state. I don't know if the board remembers, my first year, I, I was really disheartened and sad by a team up at Timberlake High School, um, they were trying to fundraise to make it to state, they had made it competition-wise to state, but their families, um, and community, they could not raise enough money to go, and they hadn't been able to go the year before I got here. That really, um, affected me, because I think it really is important for students who make it to state to be able to go. It, it's a huge event, and it's a big thing in a high school student's life, and so I felt really impacted by that. And I think the community did as well, because the first levy, that first time passed, uh, seventy percent for, so and we ran both the plant facility levy and the big increase in the instructional levy, so. Um, anyway, these are things that would have to be looked at. And we definitely would have to make, not be able to offer the same level of programs, um, and, and personnel that we do right now. So we wanna give you a little look at the summary. Uh, this is just the total amounts for the levy, and Mr. Wallace did a good job of telling you that the levy rate changes with based on the valuation and the number of people that are helping to get to that point, but the actual amount the board, that our district takes in, the board approves one of, whatever amount you choose, these are just plans that we're coming to you with, A, B, C, and D. So there's the ten point five one, nine point nine nine, eight point nine nine is a flat, and then a decrease of eight. Mr. Wallace is going to do this great slide.
And so, at the very end, to summarize, our current, so just so we're comparing apples to apples, because the only, you know, when I was talking about tax rates before, that we're sort of including all the levies, but since the only levy that's up is a supplemental. So, last year, the rate that people just finished paying and their last June payment, and our rate for the instructional supplemental levy was two dollars and forty-two cents.
Now, is that per thousand, is that?
Correct.
So for every thousand that someone's paying.
A hundred thousand.
Every thousand of taxable value.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Two thirty eights.
Yeah.
So a hundred thousand would be two hundred.
Yeah, this would be two hundred and forty-two dollars.
So it is per.
Per thousand, yes.
I just wanna give people perspective, who maybe don't fully understand what the two thirty eight is, to kind of give them an idea, because when you're talking this large amount of money, not everybody deals with that kind of money. So breaking it down.
Right, and we break, and when we've done community presentations, we break it down, if your house is worth this much, this is what the estimate of the dollar would be annually and per month.
Sure, I think that's helpful.
Yeah, we'll do that, for this presentation, we haven't been doing that, but that, but you're right. Um, because you also get the property tax exemption in there for homeowners, so there's other factors.
Sure.
This year, starting when we, property tax bills are gonna come out, I'm projecting that, that rate because of the increase in values, and we're collecting the same dollar amount, eight point nine, that is not changing, that's, we're in year two of the last time we passed it, or year four, that eight point nine million, is gonna go down to two dollars and fifteen cents, just as a comparison, so you can see what we've projected. So, on the Plan A, I'm estimating that just a supplemental will go up to two thirty eight, so close to where we were just last year, two forty two. My assumption is that our assessed value in goes up our average, so I, I did an average, I increased, just to run the numbers, six percent. The way our, the growth is happening, I'm sort of anticipating that's gonna be higher, but I figured I'd just do the twenty-year average. So it's sort of a conservative, just so you know, I wasn't picking a super-high number, twenty percent growth or something like that, to, to drive a lower number. Plan B, again, it is a million dollars more, and it would be at two twenty-six, a little bit more than what I think it's gonna be this year. We did a flat levy, because we'd have a little bit of growth, that at two fifteen would go drop down to two oh three. So I mean, the rate itself would drop, because I'm anticipating some assessed value growth. And then finally, you know, Plan D, we actually have a little bit of growth, and we reduce the dollar amount, just like we saw this year earlier when I talked about the other slide, because we're reducing our bonds, it's a big drop, I mean, it'd go down to a dollar eighty-one, and that, you know, that's a guesstimate, maybe even lower if we had more growth. So that there is, you know, and if you needed more information on, well, what's the impact of somebody who had a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house? And I could run numbers for that and get that information for you pretty quickly, you know, to just give examples of what the impact would be, but you know, there, with the levies and on the tax rates, you know, we, we wanna be honest with people, there is no, uh, there's no free lunch, and there can be impacts, but I think overall, um, you know, with a sort of holding line of the last several years, or four years, and reducing our bond payments and stuff like that, that, you know, we really haven't been focused on trying to get our rates down even lower, and that they're dropping, um, getting closer to our, our peers, and still, you know, we're not at the high end of those North Idaho districts we saw, and we're, we're not as low as Coeur d'Alene, that huge, almost twelve billion dollar tax base, but, um, sort of right in the middle of North Idaho.
Okay. So, uh, board, question and answers, discussion period, um, is now, and we'll stand for questions. Um, then also, we just wanted you to know, when we go out and talk to the community, we talk about where the different places they can vote, we put in an absentee ballot, if they're interested in getting that, um, give them the information to contact, and then we have, um, put all of the board's contact information on there, and then ours for people, and then ways for them to get in to contact us.
I think it would be very helpful if in, you know, somehow you were to do what you just talked about. What's the impact on me if my mortgage is, I don't know, you used three hundred and something thousand, I think that would be helpful, because you know, when you're thinking about like this, something like this, you really wanna know. You know, how much is this gonna impact me, and what is this gonna cost for me to provide this for our students? You know what I mean, I mean, I think anybody wants to know that.
Right, I think, and that really gets. Right, and that really gets, yeah, the only way to calculate that is getting a number from the Board.
Sure.
You know, at some point, you, you know, and I guess.
If you did the levy rate at 2.38 for a $300,000 home, it would be $714 a year on their taxes.
Okay.
But that's not in addition to what they're currently paying, that depends, that would be an adjustment to. Adjustment to their current. That's not an additional amount.
And that's would be a $400,000 value house with 300,000.
Well, I mean, the taxable, 300,000, what do you get, a hundred thousand dollars for a home?
So it's, so then it's 200,000 times the 2.38.
Well, I said 400,000, because the average house.
It's about 300.
Is 400,000 within the Lakeland District, the average.
House value?
Appraised value is 400,000 now?
It is.
Oh, yeah.
Zero, it's about 370 or something, so maybe it's gone up.
So, yeah, it has, so that's why I said, well, 400, you give 100 grand for your, for your.
Yeah, for your value, right.
Right, right.
And that's one thing, just as a philosophical thing, that the state legislature changed. Remember that homeowner's exemption used to be 50% of the value?
Right, right.
And when the legislature a few years ago capped it at 100, you know, a lot of homeowners sort of cried and said, you do that, you're gonna really kill us in the long run, and now we're seeing that fruition. So what's really shifted is it shifted the burden more onto homeowners and less on business owners.
Yeah, right.
Really, because well, it's really the business owner pays the taxes, so it's really because, because the business owners don't get the homeowner's exemption, so they, their value would be more of the pie, but now that there's less exemption out there relative to values, homeowners are more of the pie in our district. So it has been, it is a shift, you know, so there could be, the change in law would probably be helpful for homeowners, but I don't know if that legislature has any appetite for that.
So I have a question. If the levy did not stay, or didn't go up, why, I don't understand, I guess I'm trying to reconcile why leaving the levy of the same amount of money causes all these drastic cuts?
Well, I, we'd have to see, we'd have to start doing budget to see what the state revenues are, and we'd have to look. We, there are some costs that we have that are happening that are just structured in the way we do business. So right now, we have our steps and lanes for staff. So I, if I have a teacher right now with the career ladder, they, they cap out on funding after a year, it's six or seven, right? And they're at the top of the career ladder, top of the revenue side of what the state provides. But we, our salary schedule, they, they move down that scale, they keep getting raises, so my revenues on the state side stay flat, but my costs go up. Now, some of that can be countered with attrition, a veteran teacher retires, and you hire, you know, someone starting their career, so that can help out, but overall, we have a pretty veteran staff, we're still moving on the scale. That costs us several hundred thousand dollars each year, and so our levy's been able to have the capacity to absorb that plus some state increases in funding. But, you know, at some point, we've sort of grown into our levy, you see that with our audit presentation, that you know, we added a few hundred thousand dollars to fund balance this year, so it's pretty much a flat growth. So if I maintain that, my expenses keep going up for some of those things, I, I can't keep the same amount of people and keep paying them more.
Right. And 87%, as you know, 87% of our budget is people, and we've had, until this year, with the holdback from the governor, and we just did the flat. The prior years before, they had cost of living increase, and so there was an IBV, and we didn't put that into the next levy, we kept the flat, same flat amount.
Right, and then we had the increase in, or that was.
And we have increases, yeah, absolutely. We, we had a 9% increase, almost this year, a medical increase. And that will, you can figure that's gonna be anywhere from 3% to 10% every year, our medical premiums. That's in, that, that's just sort of the nature, I mean, that's hitting businesses too, that's just not the school district.
The other piece of this is that within that 8.99 levy, a lot of what we funded, based on the priorities from the community, were programs with people attached to them, and so we actually have more people on staff than what the state funds for us. So even, even with what Brian just talked about, with the this hour paying more than the state provides in revenues, on top of that, we have 20-ish teachers that state doesn't pay anything for because of the programs that we're running. So that's another piece of that. So as the, they move over on the salary schedule and get that experience, and they move down, and then if we're providing pay increases, there's just no money within that 8.99 to absorb that.
So now historically, how many, have we added an armed guard? One every year for the last three years, or?
Well, we, the first year we ran the levy, we, we had just one on there, was kind of testing the waters and figuring that program out. And then when we ran it in 2019, we, we added two, one per, one the first year and then one the second year of the levy.
Yes, so technically, it's been one per year, and I'm just, you know, I'm just throwing that out there, that, you know, maybe our levy rate is somewhere in between where I, as the levy rate goes down, if we increase the levy to make up for some of the inflation, but not enough to necessarily increase the levy rate, but have more of a flat rate and get us to the 9.5, where we can kind of look at some of the, like, maybe doing just one armed guard a year, because that gives people something, you know, that we're working towards, instead of trying to
And make it, you're saying, maybe put a two here, you're saying, one for each year?
Yeah, I mean, tweaking some of the things that we've got, so we're not just taking a $100,000 chunk. Because I see that levy rate and, and really trying to keep, I mean, let's just be honest, you know, this is a tough year for the individual, and so I mean, if we can do whatever it, we can to get that flat, not necessarily try and cut programs, but maybe, you know, look at some, some ways that we can still increase.
And if, if we really want, I could work with, you know, with Eric Haringer from Piper Jaffrey, they're actually not Piper Jaffrey anymore, they were bought by somebody, Piper Sandmore or something. Anyway, where, I mean, he'll, he's good at working because of crunching some of these numbers and doing some projections. Because part of it, what I found out is, is the public's really not too concerned with what the supplemental levy costs sold, they're looking at the total tax bill. So if we had Eric to help, because then he could help me dial in the bond costs, because the costs, the bond costs are already, we're collecting literally a million dollars less, so if you want to think about it simply, this year, we're collecting a million dollars less than we're last year, just don't think about rates, it's a million dollars less. There were, we asked 12.9 in 2019, 20, and we're asking for 11.6 this year. That's, that's a fact. That's what we're asking the county to collect. So next year, then, what we'd really be asking, if we're at 11.6, would be go up to 12.7, 200,000 less than we were two years ago in true dollars, with higher tax rates. So rates are still gonna be lower overall than what they were two years ago, there's no doubt. You want to just look at that as a Board, our 12, and that's, and then if you said, well, that 12.7 is more than I want, I want 12.5, we can look at some of those things. But my bond collections, we're winding those down in the next few years, I'm gonna be, you know, this year I'm collecting 1.4 million, next year maybe the same, but after that, I'm gonna have to start collecting less, because we're gonna start paying these things off, and they're gonna be off the books. So just, the Board needs to know that there's, you know, when you start looking at the tax rate, you know, some things come on, some things come off, and so it's, there's a lot of factors involved.
I know it's not exact, I know it's not exact, but I have a math brain, so, you know, there's two ways to get on either side of the equal sign.
Right.
Maybe we start with what our desire, let's try and keep the, you know, try and keep that tax bill flat and see where, because I know that it's gonna come up, because everything's growing, and so, you know, the rate is coming down. So if we can bring the rate up to where, you know, people don't have more of a burden, it should provide us more than what the levy is.
I know that he did work with Coeur d'Alene District, Mr. Haringer, on looking at, trying to calculate, it's not a perfect science, but I think he's pretty good at it, saying, well, here's the growth in assessed value due to growth, not due to appraisals, really, to new developments. And then, how much of that new development at the current rate, how much dollar amount would that generate? And we're gonna ask our levy then to go up by that amount. So then you could say that new growth is paying for that dollar. That's something we can start looking at, if you want to dial it in that exact, and I, I need help on that, because that gets into some assumptions that I have worked a lot on. A little bit, but I mean, if the Board's interested in some numbers like that, a little deeper dive.
Because, you know, just the overall tax bill, I mean, I think, I personally think we definitely need to have, obviously, we need to pass the levy, because it's such a big part of our budget, and the smaller class sizes in the neighborhood of schools are what we, as a school district, are known for, people value. I mean, it's always been that value, I mean, for 30 years, it's been that value, literally. And so, you know, that's what makes the school, the school district special. So, you know, I think that the way that the funding has been restructured, we need the levy, but we also need to look at the big picture. How can we really, I mean, because it has to pass for things to stay
So we want to make this appealing to people. Yes, not overwhelming. We want it to be something that people will be willing to take a look at, instead of just saying that that's too much, I'm not gonna do it. Yeah, so I agree.
I would think, coming in and saying, okay, so, you know, and I'm just throwing this out as an example, I'm not sure how the numbers would work, but you know, a 9.4 million dollar levy is gonna give us, you know, this, 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 and this, and our tax rate is gonna stay the same, your bill should stay generally, I mean, but you can go with the tax rate, because that's really all you really know to, to figure, but if the tax rate's gonna stay generally the same, we're gonna be able to get some more money in levy, because, you know, people have to understand inflation, I mean, costs, you know, costs just go up, triangle the house right now.
Yeah, wood is crazy, it's never the wooden.
So I mean, if we can keep the tax bill level, so that it's not burdening people that are already burdened this year, but we can still give the money we need to continue the programs that we're, our patrons are used to having, I think that's probably the limit.
And just, I just want to share that the, our intention behind the Plan A, B, C, and D is, was just to give you an idea of if we went here, these are things that we really would bring value to the district that we've been kind of talking about. If we were a little bit less, this is what it might look like, and just because we knew that you guys would do exactly what you're talking about, Trusty Irons, which is to figure out where that sweet spot is, and because whatever we take to our patrons, we all need to feel like it's something that they're going to be able to support, so.
Sure.
That part's important.
I do have a question on the early, early learning center.
Yes, Cam?
I realize this is a passion, and yes, we want it. You're stating the startup cost is 80,500 for one year only. What is it going to cost to sustain that? Because it's obviously gonna have an impact on the budget from the.
Not the way we have it. The first year, we just need the startup cost for some of the staffing to get us started, but then we'll be collecting tuition that year and moving into the following year, the way that we have it structured.
So then it's a tuition-based program?
It is tuition, yeah, just like any other childcare, you would pay a monthly fee.
Okay, okay.
So what would be the difference between its structure and the base program also? Because I know the base is supposed to be for itself, but it doesn't need bills for it, so I don't understand.
Oh, yeah, from their revenues. They pay for themselves.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it would be set up the same way, so it would be, yeah, and the difference really is just base will support school-aged children and the early learning center.
And only before and after school.
Right, because they're school-aged and they're in school during the day.
Right. And this initially was talked about starting, wasn't this one you initially talked about being at Tom Brown?
Yes, and then as I talked to Principal Milton, when we were doing a presentation for the Board with regard to the preschool, she's, that was when she said, could we talk about having here, because it would be ideal? And so, but when moving the sixth graders to the junior high, it does provide us some space for right now.
How is that going to affect, I, I guess, because we have this six-foot space that we have to maintain for who knows how long? And we're already have, you know, a problem with overcrowding or crowded, I wouldn't say overcrowding, but you know, I'm saying we're tight. We're really, really tight, and I know we've moved to the sixth grade, but our elementary numbers are pretty darn high. And if we take another classroom out of the elementary school to put the learning center in, I mean, I know it's just one school, but.
Well, in the way that we kind of have, the way I was thinking about it, because it is one-time cost, so if we get into next school year and we're still dealing with COVID, I'm praying that that's not the case, we could hire both, if we did two armed guards, we could hire both armed guards in that first year and do the early learning center in the second year of the levy, if that's a concern that the Board has about utilizing the space within the school. So there's some flexibility there. But it, it just provides us an opportunity to, to meet several needs. I guess one of the things I didn't mention to the Board when I was talking about the early learning center is that when our kindergarteners come in, there is a huge difference between what kids who come from a home where both parents have college degrees and they went to a preschool, and our parents who are working their heinies off maybe two jobs, trying to keep a roof over their heads, and not as much academic conversations that are happening at home, and they just, there's such a wide variance in kindergarten of what, the skills that kids have, and can, there can be a five-million-word deficit, like, that's a lot for them to overcome, and if we could provide that service for families, we could kind of mitigate some of that for kids.
In my naivety of having to learn all this, on with the instructional levy being what it is, and the amount that we're going to ask for, say we do ask for the 10.51 and we do obtain it, these four categories, are the four armed guards coming staggered in, or are they one, and then, I mean, like, are four at one time, or one, two?
No, our, our plan would to be, if we get, if it really was the four, we do two the first year, two the second year.
Okay.
Because we have additional costs with them, and then training, and the, she has a train the trainer model, the district safety task force team goes through that.
So would the science curriculum be an anticipated adoption in the very first year?
We would start the process, and when we adopt a curriculum, it takes a whole school year, basically, to get to the point where the Board is willing to approve. Something that's recommended, so if, if we passed that levy rate, or that levy amount, I would start in the fall next year with that process.
Of 2021, everything.
Which actually is in alignment, people don't realize this, because we've, we go ahead and start, when the levy passed the very first year, March of 2017, we put things in place for that next fall, when really, we weren't collecting the levy until the next year. But nobody really realizes that, so we were, we built up the fund balance and started programs that really, we hadn't got the money from that expected levy till the next year. We're always behind, which Mr. Wallace tried to point out in that one slide, but people don't, staff doesn't really realize that, they're like, okay, we passed it in March, let's get it now. So we've been able to do that, and with our fund balance, we've been able to continue that cycle. So I think what she's saying.
No, respecting for, way I process things, I'm looking at this going, not necessarily in that same mindset of, oh, we passed it, now we're gonna do all.
You're the opposite, like.
And I'm fully aware of working in the arrears, because certain industries, that's just how it works.
Yeah.
But I just, I needed to ask that question.
And I think with science, there's enough interest from our parents that I just want to be really thorough with that process and make sure that that district-level committee has parents and Board representation as we're talking about what those things are, and taking the time to really delve into those before we make a recommendation.
So I only wanted to go back to this slide because of something that Trusty Irons said. If our current levy rate that they're paying for is 2.42, and next year we're estimating 2.15, just for this piece of it, even if we went with the Plan A for that piece, it still, you know, would go down, Plan B goes down. even if we went with the Plan A for that piece, it's still, you know, would go down. Plan B goes down. You see what I'm saying? Plan C. So it's somewhere, I think what I heard you saying, and this is just one idea, was somewhere between the Plan C and Plan B, you had kind of given an amount. So the board doesn't have to pick one of these. We're just giving examples. You may choose a different amount. But for us to move forward and start to figure and to start to get the word out, we want to be able to answer any questions and bring you any information you'd like.
Wish we could do a survey and ask the community what they'd like. Wouldn't that be great?
Well, we actually did that. When we ran, did our long-range facility planning committee, we had done a survey. And we asked the question like, would you be willing to, you know, they, they did their priorities. And then would you be willing to pay the same amount if this was to happen? Would you be paying, willing to pay more? Would you be wanting to pay less? And we had an overwhelming, again, there was not a pandemic and it wasn't the same economic situation it is now. But there was quite a bit of capacity for the patrons to say, yes, if we got a new building, whether it was Lakeland Junior High School or Lakeland High School or a different elementary school, those were like the three options, there was quite a capacity for the public at that point in the community to say, yes, we'd really be willing to go up a little bit in order for that to happen. I do believe the tenor is different now. And again, it's hard to get to that because what we found with our long-range facility planning committee is similar to what Mr. Wallace said earlier. People say, well, yeah, I could willing to go up a little bit, but then they don't realize that things like Trustee Grissom said, like, well, my tax bill didn't go down and everyone else around me saying theirs went down. Why didn't mine go down in such an individualized situation? You know, he and, and Brooke and Chrissy answered question after question after question from patrons about that.
Yeah. It's a hard one for the school to, and there again, we'd like to tell them, well, it's not going to move. But we can't even really tell them that because we don't know what their assessment is.
And I've been, right. And so there's times where I've been on the phone with a patron and their tax bill went up. And so I actually looked, you know, couldn't you get on, you can, you know, see their tax bill. And I could see, you know, here's, you know, your tax bill last year and here's this year. And then I said, well, you know, your tax bill went up and let's say it was the year that we had the large jump with that and we're at the 453. The jump on most of the tax cars in the head, half the jump was due to, we asked for more money. The other half was their value of their property went up. And I know that, you know, my house that was in Raftern didn't go up that much. You know, relatively went up some, but not like that big jump. So I just went, well, you're right, we did ask for more. And that's, you know, cost this, that was a hundred dollars of your 200-dollar increase, let's say. But the other hundred was just your assessed value jump that you'd have to talk to the assessor on that. You know, you're right. And so there's some things that we can't control.
So anything that the board would like us to bring back? It sounds like maybe bringing back, sending out, we won't bring it back next time. We'd like to send out information to you ahead of time, just so that you have time to look through things, would be a valuation, if you're just an estimate for average house, maybe a little bit, something below that value and something above that value. We actually have those slides already prepared from the last couple of times we've presented. The average home and the homeowner's exemption. And we have a monthly increase or decrease and an annual increase-decrease, to your point, that we can, that we will do. So we'll send those out.
Yep. Well, I don't know if the board's interested in what Mr. Wallace talked about earlier, but it might be helpful to see just what the overall levy picture, bond and levy picture looks like. To his point with the bonds going down, there may be, to your point, Trustee Irons, some capacity to increase the instructional levy and still kind of stay where we want to be. And that might be helpful. If that's something that you're interested in.
Yeah, that would be good. I also liked, I know it's a lot of work, but since Mr. Wallace brought it up, the new growth picture versus what's already here. I mean, that would be, that would be really cool, especially a presentation wise, when you have that information that, you know.
Right. I mean, we can do some, you know, probably what I'd ask the help with, that I'd do the new growth on like A, B, and C, you know, on like those various plans and, you know, see what that impact would be, you know. And then, of course, one would be the assumption, if you did the new growth, what would, if you want, so if we're 215, if I want to keep it 215, what's the new growth we think going to be in the next two years? What would that generate in terms of dollars? Is that a million dollars? Is it 500,000 dollars? Is it 100,000 dollars? I don't know. Who could, that's what he could help me with.
Right, yeah. And I think the county has some of that, remember, they get estimated.
I have new growth that's this year, but I don't have new growth for, because remember this, if we pass this in March, it's a year from now. So not even the tax bill you have about this year, but a year from now.
Right, right.
So now you're looking at some assumptions. I'm looking at historical new growth and current trends and what they think that value is. So really, you are sort of crystal balling at that point. It's just your best educated guess.
Yeah.
Anything else the board would like?
Crystal ball.
Okay.
Yeah.
Please bring that to the next meeting.
Okay, we'll bring that to the next meeting. All right. Well, do you think of any, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I just want to emphasize that you said, but you know, this time of year, at least as far as the mission, we always get nervous about the timeline.
Right.
You know, because it gets really short, but you know, determine that amount or determine to get the resolution. So we'll try to get that information as soon as we can and hopefully, you know, get a set amount, you know, before going into the new year for sure.
Okay.
Here's just a reminder of the timeline.
You know, we can do what we can do with everything else we're doing.
Well, yeah, there's some hard deadlines. And if we miss them, then it is what it is.
Yeah, that's not good.
Well, and I, just in knowing what the frustration was, or hearing what the frustration was from the community with regard to the levy that didn't pass.
The bond.
The bond thing. I don't know that we do a good job at explaining at remedial level the purpose and the whys, other than, I mean, because the reality is without the levy, this school cannot operate the way it does. And so there will be a significant impact, whether it's lower or not passing at all.
Right.
And so I really think, which I know that we're not to advocate vote for the, vote for anything, but I mean, there's, there's the black and there's the white. So I really hope that we can convey that to the community so that they do understand this isn't just about us wanting to fluff the school district. We just want to maintain and continue to grow as we should because of the fact that that's what we do.
Right. So, well, and to your point, it's, we always have ran since I've been here, we've ran the positive. I don't allow any of the, anyone at all, maybe they say it behind my back, but I don't allow anyone to say, it, it, if I say when, when the levy passes, because we cannot stay a school district with those top priorities. We, we, and, and we did talk about, and this just doesn't, I told them, this just doesn't come out of my mouth. But there would, I mean, I can't even say it out loud, but there would be schools that would have to, we could not keep open all 11 schools and we could not keep open our currents, have our current staffing. We just absolutely could not. And I just say it to people, like, if you think of the entire school district and it's this big, whole, huge, big family like we talked about, and we say, okay, now we're going to take out, think of a big pie. And you have, you know, there's three siblings, three people and they're going to cut it into thirds for you to each get a piece of that, a third of that pie, I like key lime pie. And you think of that whole third and you completely don't have to go, that's a third. And if 87% of our budget is staffing, that equates to a lot of people that help us do what we're so great at. So the public, to your point, Trustee Thompson, needs to know, this is, this is one-third. This is a big, big, big part of why we're able to do what we do. And the funding, the why goes way back to those slides of how the state used to fund. And now it's on local taxpayers. So we're not trying to ask, we're not trying to gouge anybody. We really just need this to operate. And we are trying to be fiscally conservative and responsible with the funds, which I hope that we've built up some trust. And I know that we have from feedback we've got. I'm sure it's not 100%, but we have built up some political and capital and some trust, and especially the auditor coming tonight, that we have really been fiscally conservative. And we have been proven that we are really doing good things with their money. So that's kind of why we're trying to do that. But I think black and white, how you say, there's the note, the black and the white. And it's helpful to say it that way. It's just hard for me to talk about that. Well, you could, you could help me with that though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's true.
Yep.
And I, yeah, so.
It all depends on what they want it to look like, right? If they don't mind, you know, bungee corner doors and cardboard over windows and things like that, then they can keep the levy.
Well, true, but if we can't educate children.
Right. But I already know it's, obviously, it's going to be for my area. Everybody makes too much. What they say.
House. You can compare anyone from the custodian, parapro, a first-year teacher in the state of Idaho, all the way up to the superintendent in this district, and you could compare them throughout the state. And then you can compare them throughout the nation. And I guarantee you, maybe in comparison to, I mean, actually, it isn't even true because we were just talking the other day in our budget team, how Jack in, was it Jack in the Box? Or no, Carl's, what was Brooke selling from HR? Their, their, the starting wage, Carl's Jr., where was it, you guys?
Maybe Carl's Jr.
Carl's Jr. starting wage is higher than what a instructional parent that is educating our kids. And they have to go to school, college for two years or pass the parapro test, the practice.
Right.
That's in Cortlande. They're making, they're starting at 15 bucks a year.
At a fast food joint.
I see it all. I see the signs all the time. Yeah. I think it's just not understanding the cost of doing business in today's world, you know, is, is part of what it is, but.
And then just that needing to compete with Washington when their, their pay is so far.
Exactly.
And even Cortlande, Cortlande, like Ponderay, you know, just our peers there, Washington puts pressure on all of us. But, you know, there definitely is pressures just to keep up with our, in stage.
Well, that's the other thing is, the district itself is what keeps the people wanting to stay here.
Right.
That's why they make the sacrifice to drive even long distances to teach and to work here is because of the district's atmosphere.
Yeah, that whole family thing, that, yeah. Well, we appreciate, want to give you a break before the regular board meeting. We appreciate having this huge audience here. And people online didn't, weren't able to see how big of an audience we have here. So thank you. And have you, thank you all. We'll be back at 6 o'clock.